I can tell you what's in it, I can't tell you how to make it.
Yeah.
You had to be there. Ready? I'd like to welcome everyone to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for DeKalb, Illinois. This is December 4th. In accordance with Governor Pritzker's mandates and the state laws, we are social distancing, abiding by all the protocols that have been put in place. With that, I'd like to start with a roll call. Becker?
Here.
McMahon?
Here.
O'Flaherty?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
Doe?
Here.
Wright?
Here.
Chair Maxwell?
Here.
We have a quorum, seven present.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to go to the approval of the agenda. Any additions or deletions? Does anyone have any comments? Can I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve as written.
Moved by O'Flaherty?
I'll second. Doe?
I'm sorry, seconded by Doe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All the same sign. So passed. Moving to the minutes of the last meeting. If there are any comments or changes that anyone would like to make, please speak now. If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes. Moved by Klein.
Second.
Seconded by Jerry. All in favor, say aye.
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 All of those same sign, so passed. This will start the public participation portion of the meeting. If there's anybody that would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda tonight, please step forward, I do have...
I think they're going to speak about Safe Passage, so we'll wait until then.
Okay. We'll move on to new business. We have three items on the agenda this evening. The first is a public hearing, a petition by Safe Passage Inc. for approval of the zoning map amendment for the CBD Central Business District to the PDC Planned Development Commercial District, and approval of preliminary development plan to accommodate a new two-story, 42,000-square-foot building which will contain an emergency shelter, counseling services, administrative offices, outdoor playground, and other necessary uses for the property located at 217 Franklin Street. Anybody from the audience that would like to speak to this, please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Ellen Shade. You want my home address?
Yes, please.
2002 Thornwood Circle, St. Charles, Illinois 60174.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm the executive director of Safe Passage, and I'm here tonight to talk with you a little... I'll tell you a little bit about the organization and also why we have been on a journey for the last five years to find property to be able to build a new building for the agency. So Safe Passage is the primary, probably the only, agency in all of DeKalb County that serves victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, dating violence, trafficking, and basically those things. And we currently operate a 30-bed shelter, which is on... It's in five buildings, three of which are facing Fourth Street, one is facing Prospect, and one is facing Fifth Street. There's also an apartment building that's on Prospect. So we operate an emergency shelter for victims of domestic violence and their children. We also... We serve primarily women and children, but we also serve men in that shelter. In addition to the emergency shelter, there are a lot of other things we do that I think a lot of people aren't aware of, but we have full counseling services, and those are for people throughout the community. Anyone, you don't have to be in the shelter to come and receive counseling services, and that's individual, family, children's counseling, and group counseling. We also provide legal advocacy, which is helping people obtain orders of protection and helping them with obtaining victim impact, writing victim impact statements, and also applying for victims' compensation. We also attend court hearings to support victims with our legal advocacy. In addition, we have the apartment building, and we have four off-site apartments where we provide transitional housing, which is two-year housing for people who mostly come out of the shelter, but people from the community can also apply to be in the housing. And that is two years in an apartment, and they can live in that apartment. We're... We have an agreement with the DeKalb Housing Authority for the building that we have on site, and they do pay some rent in that building. However, if they live there for a year, they're eligible for a housing certificate anywhere in the country, which is a huge benefit to victims. And then we also have four off-site apartments. In addition, we provide a lot of public education and prevention education in most of the schools throughout the county, and we currently have satellite offices, one in Sycamore, that is across the street from the courthouse, and one in Sandwich, that is in downtown Sandwich, to provide services on that portion of the county. The people that are in the Sycamore office primarily provide legal services. Like I said, we've been looking for property to move Safe Passage. I have to tell you that really the first day that I went into the shelter that we have at Safe Passage, I knew right away it was very inadequate for what we were doing. It's an old farmhouse, it's more than 100 years old. It has five bedrooms and one and a half bathrooms. The bedrooms are small, there's very limited closet space, the staircase to go upstairs to the bedrooms is very narrow. Knock on wood, we have not had an accident since I've been there. However, it is... Some people have a hard time. We also have bunk beds in the bedrooms because we only have five bedrooms. And again, that's not ideal either for a lot of victims who really aren't comfortable or have a hard time. So the shelter was inadequate, has been probably for a long time. And I will tell you that in addition to the shelter being, I'd say inadequate physically, we make the best of it, and people are safe there, and people do stay there. But in addition to that, we probably... We get calls, probably turn away 15 to 20 people a month who want to come into the shelter. They are at risk, and they want to come into the shelter, but we don't have any bed space. So that is pretty consistent, and another really huge reason why we need a bigger shelter and new space. In addition, we are, like I said, in five different houses. Excuse me. And so our counseling... Children's counseling's in one house, adult counseling, our sexual assault program is kept separate in a different house, we have an administrative building, and the apartment. But it's actually worked out pretty well during COVID because everybody's pretty distant, but it's not ideal for an agency such as Safe Passage. So in addition to a new shelter, we want a new building because we need to have more cohesiveness in our organization. So we serve about 1,000 people in our various programs. Every year, we have a budget of about $2.5 million currently. We are primarily grant-funded by the government, mostly federal money that flows through the state. Let's see, what else can I tell you? Does anybody have any questions?
Maybe Mary Ellen, you could talk about the site that you want to go to?
Sure.
A little bit about what you...
Sure, yes. So the site we have finally landed on, and like I said, we've been looking for five years. We had a committee, we were really looking at the old St. Mary's Hospital for a couple of years, and we were hoping that that could be renovated to give us what we needed. Then the financial crisis hit, and when we came back to it, somebody else had expressed interest in it, and so we had to give up on that. It probably wouldn't have worked anyway, so it probably was meant to be. Then we looked at several other properties. One, we almost purchased on Taylor Street, but for a number of reasons, that didn't work out. And then we've... The Duque, the medical clinic, which is on Franklin and Second, which is right around the corner from where we currently are, became available, and we purchased it, and with the help of an anonymous donor, and we purchased the property. And then we went through a series of... We did an RFP for architecture and engineering, and we landed on working with Pappas Development. Let's see, what else? What am I forgetting? Sorry.
Talk about the site, maybe the parking?
The site itself, okay, yes. Okay, the parking. We are going to have about 18 spaces on the park... On the actual lot. And several of those will be for clients. Some of our clients who live at Safe Passage do have cars, many do not. We have about 25 to 30 staff that'll be in the building at any given day during the week. And so what we have done is we've contacted the church, the Greek church that's across the street, directly across the street from the building, and they have a big parking lot there with 32 or 36 spaces. And so we're entering into a contract with the church. They do not use the parking lot during the week, and we will... We're entering into an agreement. The details have to be negotiated, however, we'll probably keep it, well, if we ever get snow, you know, free of snow, and do some caretaking of it in exchange. And then we will not use that space at all on Sunday. So I think our parking situation is going to be just fine. We really don't have any plans to park on the street. Currently at Safe Passage, we have, I think, about 12 to 14 parking spaces in the alley behind... Between, you know, the houses, behind Fourth Street. And so many of our people do have to park on the street, and they often park on Prospect. So I think the parking situation at the new site will be much better than it currently is. So at any rate, Safe Passage is very much in need of a bigger shelter, more space. We are growing, unfortunately. Domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, those kind of crimes are not lessening in our community and throughout the whole country. And so it's really important that DeKalb County has a great agency and a great facility that can serve all the people that need our help.
How many people are you planning to serve at this facility, and number of bedrooms?
The shelter will have enough for approximately a maximum of 60 people. Like I said, currently, we have 30, and that's adults and children. We about... I don't know, I'm always guessing, but... Because it's always different. But probably 25, 30% of our population in the shelter are children. That can be from 0 to 18. We do allow that age range. And so 60 maximum. We currently can house 30. We turn away about 15 a month, so I think the... We'll come to potentially 60. I think it'll take a while before we get there. But I think ultimately, the county can... Has that need.
Just out of curiosity, will you be maintaining any of the other properties, or will you be consolidating them all to this building?
We plan to keep the apartment building so that we can continue to provide transitional housing there, but I... Our plan right now is to sell as many of those properties as we can.
But effectively, this doubles your capacity almost?
Correct.
Good.
Yes?
I have a question on the parking. The clinic owned that lot, did they not, directly across the street, south, or does that belong to the church?
As far as I know, it belongs to the church.
I think the clinic owned it one time, the Greek church owns it now.
Because the clinic always used that lot across the street. So who... The church owns that lot though, right? So you're trying to rent it. If you can't rent it, won't you have a parking problem?
We're not trying to rent it, we're trying to negotiate a...
So you want to buy it?
No, we don't want to buy it either, we just want to use it.
Let me run through the staff report, and I can...
Yeah. Can we?
Because I'm still unclear about that.
Yeah.
He does describe it in detail?
Yes, Mary Ellen went very well through the description of the property, the uses. They're asking for rezoning. It's currently zoned Central Business District. They're asking to rezone it to a Planned Development Commercial District, which will accommodate the mix of uses proposed. As Mary Ellen mentioned, they're at a current location, they have six buildings over at Fourth Street, Fifth Street, and Prospect. They'd like to consolidate their services. They will keep the transitional housing over on the current location, this in the one apartment building. So this will be a big benefit, consolidating their services into one location. That's a big key, plus they need to increase capacity with the need that they have since they're turning away some people monthly. So the proposed building, you see the site plan was in your packets, it's about 42,000 square feet, two-story, there will be a basement also. We did get some architectural elevations today, this morning, that are provided copies to you on your desk, showing the proposed building and the way it will look. They indicated that the 24 separate bedrooms will serve up to about 65 women, men, and children. They indicate about 25, 30% will be children. The current location, again, they mentioned housing up to about 30 people, they're turning away 15 per month, so with a max of 65, this will be a transition period. They're not automatically going to have 65 people right away, this will be a transition into that number. The new building describes the uses of full kitchen, administrative offices, counseling offices, group therapy sessions, counseling space, activities, exercise areas for children also in there. Access will be provided, you can see in the site plan, from the three current locations over in the DeKalb Clinic, the building was just demolished, that was completed over the weekend. They'll have access onto Franklin, also onto South Third. South Second Street will be a delivery drop-off area, there's a canopy over that area, so that won't be access into a parking. They plan to have an outdoor play area in this green space area, so they're adding additional green space to the current footprint that was there with the DeKalb Clinic. That looks at the aerial site a little bit further back from the property. This shows a street view. Couple of site issues, they will be taking the old patient drop-off area for the clinic and curbing that, adding green space in those, continuing to curb across there, so there won't be a need for a drop-off area, so they're going to improve that. That's looking the other way on Franklin. That's looking at the 32-space parking lot that they're working on an agreement with, with the St. George Greek Church. You do have a letter that was provided from the church tonight that I did hand out. It indicates that they're confirmed that they're negotiating an agreement with Safe Passage to provide that parking over there pretty much throughout the week. In the staff recommendation in the back, there's a condition that a parking agreement does have to be come to an agreement between the two prior to any occupancy of the building to use that lot. So we talked about parking, they do have space for 18 on their site. That's on the... To the northeast and east of the site, and that's going to be their entrance for their clients, correct?
That's correct, yes.
For their people to be staying there, and also employee parking. So most of the activity will be on east side and some in the front, too. On South Second Street, there's be a delivery and occasional drop-off area over there. As mentioned, and parking, there is abundance of public parking in the vicinity. You have public parking in the Vaughn parking lot up in this area, also public parking up here, then there's on-street parking on Third Street and also Second Street, a total of about 20 cars. There's three-hour limit parking over there on both those streets. No parking is allowed on Franklin. And you can see the 32-space lot that's owned by the church here, that they're working on an agreement to have access to that. Few more site issues, they are... As quickly, the... So parking, one thing to note, too, this is in an area, and I noted, put down, shown in red here, there's two areas downtown. If you're in the downtown area, shown in red here, there's two areas. Both of these areas, you do not... It's not required under UDO, provide onsite parking. It's not required. In this area here, the smaller red area, which proposed Safe Passage site is part of, you're not required to provide any onsite parking. However, you cannot reduce the amount of parking that's on your site. So DeKalb Clinic had about 60 spaces, they're going down to 18. That's one of the two waivers that they're asking for, and the other is for a planned development under two acres, which we granted before. So that is a waiver, but with the change of use, this is a less intense use in the DeKalb Clinic in terms of amount of people coming in and out of the facility, plus with the additional parking at the church lot and the abundance of public parking in the area, we recommend approval of that. But the UDO does not require any onsite parking for this particular area of the downtown. There is a sanitary sewer that's going to be relocated on the site. I think it's kind of hard to see, there's sanitary sewer right through the middle of the site. They're going to relocate that to the west, over to Second, then down, and connect over again on Franklin Street. That actually is going to be a discussion point for some TIF funding that will be shared between TIF funding, Safe Passage, and the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District to help pay for that. It's about $75,000 to relocate that, so that needs to be done. They're proposing to do that with this development. We did contact the police department, asking about the... What their thoughts were about Safe Passage. They indicated they have no safety concerns or issues with Safe Passage in terms of their relocation here. They have a really good relationship with the police department, since the police department saved Passage. They provide a valuable service to the community, and the police department has a really good relationship, addresses the rise of domestic violence that's going on in the city. So the... I don't know if Mary Ellen mentioned, but they're going to have security at this location be enhanced. Maybe you can talk about that, if that... A little bit here, too. The recommendation is to approve. I'll go through the finding of facts here. One of the conditions is that we'll have them do a final development plan, which will include engineering, lighting plan, landscaping, architectural elevations. You can prove the ones that are here tonight if you choose to do that. That will come back through, you'll see that again. It won't be a public hearing, but it'll be a public meeting, where you'll see that plan again with more detail, and that'll go to the commission, you'll recommend, and go on to the city council. So this is a rezoning. Findings of fact, criteria, this is what you base your rezoning on. We look at the comp plan, the comprehensive plan calls for commercial on this particular property, and the use, you know, how long has it been vacant, what's been the condition of the property over time, and it's been obsolete for over 10 years for the most part. I mean, the DeKalb Clinic moved in a little over 10 years ago from the location, hasn't been used up to its potential, it's being demolished, and the use is going in, that's going to be a benefit to the community and the neighborhood, and will fit in. We look at if it conforms to the intent and purpose of the UDO. It meets all the requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance, except for the two waivers, which I just went through. We take a look at the rezoning, how it will affect the neighborhood and adjacent land uses. The rezoning will not have a detrimental effect on adjacent land uses, it's complementary. The new facility allows Safe Passage to move all their programs and services, except the transitional housing program to one location. That'd be a big benefit to the overall operation and efficiency of the agency. The rezoning request will help in a site that's been obsolete for over 10 years. A big key, too, is proximity to downtown, the people staying here, it's a benefit for the people, because many do work downtown area, they're close to transit and shopping. So it's important that they're in a downtown location, a place out on the edge of the community would not be good for the residents who are staying there. We look at public facilities and services already exist to the site. I mentioned the relocation of the sanitary sewer. They're providing, again, onsite parking is not required, they're providing 18 spaces on the site and working on agreement with the church to get additional access to 32 spaces. And plus, there's additional public parking on Second Street, Third Street, and within the area, there's abundance of public parking within that area. Public input, we did receive, and it was in your packet, an email correspondence from Corey Gallin. They're the owner of the apartment complex just to the south of the parking lot. I think it's his location right there. Apartment building, indicating they object, do not support the rezoning request. They support the cause of Safe Passage, is engaged in, they do not believe the rezoning will benefit the neighborhood. Since that posting on the agenda Thursday, we'd also received a, which I provided you, email, they responded on the citizen response form from Chris Costantino with the Costantino Law Firm. They're right on South Second Street. Right here, they own two lots, they do have some off-street parking available. They were supportive of Safe Passage, their operation, and it'd be a big improvement to the location. They were concerned about the... There's some three-hour parking on South Second Street, they want to make sure that's abundantly available, I guess, for their clients. So there's about 10 spaces along there. As I mentioned earlier, and most of the activity is going to be on the east side of the building, so Safe Passage doesn't see a lot of use for parking on South Second Street. Plus, the Vaughn parking lot is right next door up here, which has 86 spaces, and there's about 20, some of those are permit-only, but there's abundance of unrestricted parking right next to that law firm. So I did talk to Chris after I did receive the email, just to talk about that, mentioned the 32-parking lot for the church that they're working on an agreement, he wasn't aware of that, so... But he just wanted to pass this on to the commission.
Okay, thank you.
So in conclusion, we recommend approval, there's a sample motion provided. It does not include approval of the elevations, which we just received this morning, you can include that if you wish. They're working on some color renderings, which won't be available till, I think, Wednesday. So it recommends approval, subject to Exhibit A, that's the preliminary development plan, is approved, which we've provided. It also improves the... Some standards, the permitted uses, of course, emergency shelter not exceeding 65 occupants, so there's a max we're putting on here. Counseling service, administrative offices, outdoor playground, and other accessory uses that have been described. Parking, minimum of 18 spaces provided on the subject site, and they have to have a parking agreement for access to the 32-space lot the church owns prior to a signed agreement of both parties prior to occupancy of the building. The book buildings setback, bulk regulations, that's per the UDO, the PDC District, except for the two waivers, which I mentioned. And then the final development plan that will include the elevations, lighting plan, landscape plan, more detailed engineering be provided after the rezoning, if it's approved, that will have to come back to the planning commission, so you get another look at it, and that would then go on to the city council for final approval. That's all, thanks, Chair.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, Mary Ellen, you can have a seat, you don't have to stand there the whole time. If there's anyone at this point from the public that would like to speak, I do have one request form from David Hughes, 305 South Third Street.
David Hughes, 305 South Third Street. Dan, you want to pull us up? We're right there across the street.
Oh, sure.
Anyway, I had some questions.
Are you right, correct?
Can you hear me? Yeah, we're right there. Now, Dan doesn't think that there's going to be a problem with parking, but there's 60 bedrooms and 35 offices, so, you know, that's like 95 people in that area. And I know, you know, when the clinic was there, they parked on our street, that's not a problem, but I... There's some issues with that. One of them is the number... but I, there's some issues with that, one of them is the number of battered people that are going to be staying there, you said that you do the whole county anyway, right? Okay, my concern is, is that if people are staying there, then if they have to go to work, they have to park their car somewhere, so it's going to be overnight parking, and then they're going to have to go to wherever they work, and if it's in Waterman or Kirkwood or something like that, I mean, it's going to be, that happens, right?
The-
Countywide? Well, and then, and then the other thing is, so, so I'm not-
I'm sorry, when you're looking that way and talking through the mask, I cannot understand you.
Can I take this off?
That would be great.
Okay, so, so we've got 35 offices, which means 35 people, and then we have 60 bedrooms.
That's correction, there's 24 bedrooms, maximum of 65 people, so that's not correct.
That's what was on the request, though, right?
They had some additional numbers on the application, so they were revised, but there's 24 bedrooms, serving up to 65 women, children, men, is that correct? Yeah, that's an error.
That's fine.
That was on the petition.
Okay, so, so they're going to be people, hopefully, the battered people are going to try and, try and continue living, right, they're going to continue to go to work, so there will be more, a larger requirement for overnight parking, that I don't think Dan had actually considered, and then 35 offices, that's a lot of people, so, parking is an issue. The one thing that's also in the, in the application here, Dan, where it says that the building has been vacant for over 10 years, you mentioned, you used another word for that, it wasn't, it wasn't actually vacant 10 years.
Yeah, there's been some storage, other uses there, pretty-
Yes, yes, it hasn't been 10 years.
Yeah.
And then it says that it was often used by homeless, I've never seen any homeless there, now, I've seen homeless in town, but I'm-
That was from the applicant, I don't know if that's-
Okay, and then it said that, that they believe that this will positively, the homeless would make it not safe, okay, and what I'm offended by is that I'm a member of the community, and I'm, I'm proud of our community, and I don't want to see us put down, my community put down, just so they can sensationalize their project, that's, I'm offended by that. But then back, back to the number of people that are going to be staying there, if there's 35% that are children, those children then will end up going to the DeKalb School District, which means now the burden of all these new people in this area, because they're going to increase by almost 300%, 285% increase in clientele. My, is that correct?
Can I interrupt you, though? That's, that's making the assumption that all of those people are coming from outside of the DeKalb area, which is the largest area that it serves.
DeKalb City or DeKalb County?
It serves DeKalb County, and I'm sorry Marilyn, you can address this, but it serves DeKalb County, but the largest population we have is in DeKalb as it stands now, so.
DeKalb or Sycamore?
Population wise, DeKalb, and so you're making the assumption that all of those people are coming in from outside of DeKalb.
I do, I do believe that Sycamore has a different school district than DeKalb.
No, 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 I agree with you, I'm just saying-
Okay, so what I'm saying is, is that the influx of battered people and the influx of the students will be an additional burden to the taxpayers, I don't think that was considered.
Maybe Mary Ellen could address the children that are currently there and the school situation. Go ahead, up to the podium.
Right now?
No, Mary Ellen can approach the podium-
Can you guys swap for a second? And maybe just, just to the proportions to address his concern?
So a certain percentage of the, of the children, probably a third, are under school age, they don't stay in the shelter, three to six months is the longest stay. Some of the children come from other surrounding communities like Sycamore, and sometimes, just depending on what their needs are, they can be taken to school in Sycamore or in their home community, that happens occasionally, but there are children there that go to DeKalb schools, that is correct, it's not that many, as many as you referenced, sir.
Well, that was in the, that was in the petition, right? You notice members that have a petition?
Okay, I-
Yeah, as just repeated, there's 65 is the max capacity, about 30% will be children, and Mary Ellen just indicated about a third of those are not school age children, so.
So when they say positively impact, the DeKalb, the city of DeKalb, the people of the city of DeKalb will be having to bear this burden, right, the additional burden potentially from other areas of the, of the county, and when I heard that there was going to be a 285% increase, I kind of thought, well, you know, I'm all in favor of helping people, but this might pull other people's problems into our area, and then we're going to put a burden on our community, and I mentioned the school districts and the crime and the other, you know, there's, there's other issues involved that we have to support, we, we're going to be victims of the crimes, and we're going to have to take, take care of the services, the support, some of the support services, the city of DeKalb, so, but you kind of said that this was already a countywide thing, so I don't know. Anyway.
Yeah, just David, real quick to that, to that point, and again, if I am understanding it correctly, you currently serve the entire county as it stands now, and you said the majority of your money is followed through federal grant programs, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, just so we're clear.
And the schooling, the schooling isn't significant, is what you're saying, cost of the schooling isn't significant?
Well, I, I can't say it's not significant, I'm just saying now, it's not going to be going to the high schools as you-
Yeah, I'm, I'm using, I'm using the, the petition that you filed with the city, so, okay, and then now, the city has a crime-free housing situation, does that apply at all to this, to this facility?
No, that's more for rental situations.
And there's going to be no long-term stuff, that's going to be still in the apartment building?
Correct.
The transitional, correct, in current location.
So, so is there any kind of government regulation on, on this?
Well, they have to meet all the building code requirements, and their inspections will be done, I don't know if there's going to be in a rooming house, but there'll be inspections done, they're not exempt from any type of building code or any restrictions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? With that, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to comments from the commission.
Is there anybody on Zoom that wants to speak?
I have a question, Mary Ellen, could you expand upon the enhanced security features you were referencing?
All of our buildings right now currently are locked, and they have to be entered with key fob, we're expecting to have that same or better on every door in the new building. We also have a number of cameras, I think right now currently we have 11 cameras on the various buildings and covering all the parking areas, and we will have more, as many as we need. We also have a good relationship with the DeKalb Police Department, and I've been talking with them, they have expressed an interest in possibly having an alarm that would directly contact them if we were to have a problem. We don't, we serve victims, so we don't have a lot, we don't have much crime, and we don't have, we, since I've been there six years, we have not had a problem with like offenders coming on site to the, to where the agency is, even though a lot of them know where it is, so I, I think, like I said, Mr. McMahon, we will do everything we can to make sure, our security is, is important to us, very important to us, and we want to keep all the clients we serve and every staff we serve safe, and so everything will be locked, we will have cameras that will be monitored on a regular, you know, 24/7 basis, we have, currently we have staff in the shelter 24/7, and they have access to the camera, the monitors that, where the cameras go to, and they are available to call, you know, right now they call the police, but again, if we were to have a, an immediate problem in the, in the new facility, we would have an alarm system set up with the police department.
Do you have consistent staffing seven days a week, I mean, the quantity, the quali- quantity of the staffing?
No.
So like, for instance, on Sunday, would it be less than maybe normal, so that, you know, when the churchgoers are using the parking lot, maybe it wouldn't be as big of an issue?
There are very few staff on Saturday and Sunday.
Okay.
Only staff in the shelter.
So not being able to use the, the church parking lot on Sundays isn't that big of a deal?
Right. We only have two or three staff, maybe four or five in the bigger building, but yes, it's very limited staff on the weekend.
At your present facility, have you ever had any complaints of any kind from the neighbors about things were conducted at your facility, any trouble with any of the neighbors?
No, not that I'm aware of, in fact, I don't think a lot of the neighbors even know we're there, it's, you know, we're, we're a very calm operation, but no, we have not had complaints from the neighbors.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Nope, Ms. Stone?
I'll wait. Sorry, so what is, or do you have a backup if the agreement with the parking lot with the church does not come through?
Well, I'm pretty confident that the agreement is going to come through, and we don't have a backup right now, my understanding is that it's not a requirement that we have parking, and so I, but I obviously want parking, as much parking as we need, so I, I really am very confident that that parking lot will be available to us.
So Dan, I have a question that I think maybe you have to answer, if this agreement just say doesn't happen to go through, since that's part of the exhibit or part of the requirements, what happens?
Well, we do have, as noted, a standard or condition that they have to provide that signed agreement prior to occupancy of the building, the access to the 32 parking spaces, so that is a requirement, so they can't occupy the building unless they have that agreement in hand.
Okay, thank you.
I'm assuming that would also, since they're having to build a structure, that agreement's going to have to be in hand before they can even consider-
Yeah, I think they're working on it pretty hard to get that pretty soon here, that's what they, I think, want to get in place pretty quickly.
And I, to me, it appears that, you know, from at least our perspective, it isn't so much the facility, we think it, you know, it provides a good service, an essential service, and access to commerce, access to, to services in that particular location, I think would benefit the community greatly, but I think part of the concern that a lot of us have is with parking, for example, even if you reach an agreement with the church, what happens when they have a funeral? I've been to the church on a day of a funeral, and that parking lot fills, and then pours over onto the street, you know, have you, as you are negotiating with the church, has that been a part of your consideration on those days? And I don't mean to, I, I can't speak for the community, but I've been there a couple times for funerals, and they seem to have an older population, which I would think would mean that they service a lot of funerals, and I, that's, I don't mean to be flippant, but, you know, being, being Catholic, I know, I understand that we are an aging population, and I don't think that church is any different, so what do you do if every week they're having a, they're having a funeral? Are you, are you making complaints, Mr. Papas, you were going to address that?
John Papas, I do belong to that church, there's about 35, 40 members of the church as of right now, and the membership is really declining now, funerals like Corn Fest, right, and events three, four times a year, five times a year, so I would say on average, maybe there's one funeral a year, or two, max, so I, I just don't see the funerals becoming an issue, or having an extra event in the church, or more people on a Sunday would become an issue as far as the parking. Now, when DeKalb Clinic has been there for, I don't know, 60, 70 years, the church always used that parking lot, and the clinic probably had 10 times the traffic, the safe passage will ever generate, and it was never an issue, so here we go again, it's always about parking at the end of the day, but I, I just, I'm very, very confident that Safe Passages will come to the agreement with the church, I've been communicating with the church, and we're going to be meeting with them the next two, three days, and I can assure you 99.99% that Safe Passages will be able to use the parking lot seven days a week, and like I said, there's 35, 40 members in the church, the majority of them, they're older, they do go on, pass on, but I, I just don't see the church generating any more traffic than they have been the last 15, 20 years, I, I just don't see, there's, you know, I go to the church there a few times a year, but I, I just don't see where there would ever be a problem. I think there's plenty of parking on Third Street, there's plenty of parking on Second Street, there's two public parking lots, there's one right across from the old city hall, that 70, 80% is vacant at all times, the Vaughn parking lot right behind the Buick shop, the majority of that parking lot is pretty empty the majority of the time, so I, I just, I, I, in general, I don't see a problem with parking, I just don't.
So then, thank you very much, I appreciate the input from a parishioner, that being the case, then do you prioritize your onsite parking for your residents, and staff then would park offsite in one of the adjacent lots or something like that if necessary?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
And as far as the building and stuff, tonight here for the zoning, as far as the building would be very similar to extraneous, like the rest of the redevelopments downtown DeKalb, as far as quality and stuff, so, and Safe Passage made it very clear from day one, when I was, when I got involved, that their number one priority besides serving the people they serve is to be neighborhood friendly, as a matter of fact, we're eliminating 15, 16 parking spaces on Franklin, so they can add more landscaping, more trees, so the landscaping coverage on that property is about 38 or 39% of the property, that's almost unheard of, you're not going to get a developer to be willing to give up 35% of the property for landscaping, that's for sure, but Safe Passage, that's their number one priority was to be neighborhood friendly and do the landscaping, in the beginning, I even recommended using Franklin Street, like the DeKalb Clinic used to, used to use for parking, and they said absolutely not, we'd rather have landscaping, more trees, and be more neighborhood friendly, so I personally do not see a problem anywhere, I think would be the best use for that property, and obviously there is a demand in the community or the county for Safe Passage, and definitely it would be a lot better off where they are now, if they don't have a parking issue right now, definitely they will not have a parking issue at that location, right now they're really working, as far as parking between, an alley, right, they park on the side of the homes there, it's, it's not the best case scenario, but this is definitely a lot better for the community and for Safe Passage, and I just don't see, I, I don't see the downside, especially when it comes down to parking.
Thank you. I do have a citizen response form that I'd like to read real quickly, Mary, I'm sorry if I'm getting this incorrect, Lon Hughes?
Mary Lou.
Lou Hughes, I apologize, 305 South Third Street, just wanted to note that she is not supporting the proposal, you say 24 bedrooms, but only up to 60 people, the petition says- The petition says 60 bedrooms, four beds to each, coming out to 240. Think my property value will go down because I don't think people want to live across the street from a shelter. Thank you, Mary Lou, I appreciate your input. Any other comments from the?
If we're talking about consolidating your operations, right? And if you were looking at the parking situation for all of your operation, would you say that's much more than the parking you're trying to get with the church and the 18?
You don't, I, I forget how many things people said, but there aren't that many people that come to safe passage on the daily basis. And the clients, a large percentage of them do not have cars. So our goal would be to keep them onsite when they do have cars, and the staff would park offsite in the parking lot across the street or somewhere else if that was not available.
Have you, have you talked to farandas across the street? I happen to know the owner.
They've been good neighbors so far, yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just as an observation, and Dan, I think you can answer this. The existing parking, and obviously the need is there for the green space, but how many is, how many parking spots are being reduced from what it currently maintains?
60. DeKalb Clinic had roughly, based on aerial photo, about around 60 spaces.
Okay.
On the site.
So two thirds is being?
And they're going down to 18. Now, the, the Cal Clinic had a much more traffic, more employees.
Obviously, yes.
So, but going from 60 onsite down to 18. So that's one of the waivers, but based on the demand, change of use, availability of the 32 space, park, church lot, public parking in the area, and the UDO doesn't require onsite parking for this particular part of downtown, so.
Okay.
May I ask, the production of a green space for DeKalb, that's not a requirement, that's?
Something that you're requesting for the students and children.
And there was a discussion about parking versus green space. And the choice was green space?
Well, because of the parking available across the street, right?
Anyone else? Okay. With that, I'll ask for a motion to approve. But I will ask, Dan, what we need to incorporate with that for the second presentation? Because it seems closed, it seems closed to me in the way that it's phrased now.
The sample motion is provided, includes everything. The only thing not included, if you do want to, is the architectural elevations that were provided to you tonight. They're dated 12/5/20. But the sample motion is ready, prepared, it covers everything.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we should wait on the elevations till the next time it comes, because they'll be more developed at that point. I mean, it looks like it's going in the right direction, but, and I'll make the sample motion?
Please.
Okay. Based on the submitted petition and testimony presented, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission forward its findings of fact and recommend to the city council approval of the rezoning of subject site at 217 Franklin Street from the CBD Central Business District to the PDC Plan Development Commercial District, and approval of a preliminary development plan as listed in Exhibit A to accommodate an emergency shelter, counseling services, administrative offices, outdoor playground, and other accessory uses subject to the standards listed in Exhibit B and subject to staff comments listed in Exhibit C.
Motion by O'Flaherty?
Second.
Second by Klein, roll call please.
Becker?
A very enthusiastic yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Doe?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Chair Maxwell?
Another enthusiastic yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. That will move to the second item on the agenda for this evening. Final plat resubdivision, petition by Kevin Thiessen for approval to resubdivide Lot 3 of Hammock Subdivision into two thirds lots, two thirds, two lots located at 1100 South 7th Street. Final plat of the Thiessen resubdivision.
We have the petitioner, Kevin Tyson, will be speaking. Kevin's here, so go ahead.
Good evening. Some of you here don't know me, others do. My name is Kevin Tyson. I was the owner and operator of Standard Roofing Company that was located at 1100 South 7th Street in DeKalb. On February 21st of this year, a devastating fire took my entire business. We had a total loss, taking the building, trucks, inventory, all of our tools and equipment, and 45-year accumulation of my personal items, many of which are not replaceable. There was literally nothing left of the building. And I cannot afford to rebuild the company from the ground up. My intent is to take this two-acre parcel and divide it into two one-acre parcels. The previous building sat on the southern half of this division. And the previous building with the footprint that we have there, my goals and intentions for the future are to put up another building within that footprint on the south portion of the two-acre lot. And I'm hoping to start construction next year. However, it's, the future is still speculative of what I'm going to use the building for. The north one-acre parcel will then become available for anyone, including myself in the future, for possibly another building or another business or whatever. But again, I'm trying to take this one large lot that basically I only occupied half of it with my business, and I maintain the other half is a beautiful yard and landscaping, and which I will continue to do. However, it will become more valuable to me and to the city if somebody else down the road wants to possibly put a future business up. Anybody have any questions?
Please, a staff report, please.
Just briefly, as Kevin mentioned, the ten is to resubdivide current lot into two lots. It's owned light industrial for future commercial uses. So we do have a, added a 20-foot easement along the common lot line for utilities and drainage. The front building line is also shown. And we're working out a private easement. There's a currently a sanitary sewer that runs to the former building in this direction here. And in the plat, they do have a private easement to grant the access rights for Lot 1 across Lot 2. So we're working on that easement language. It's a private easement, but that will be on the plat. So we're working that out with the applicant and the surveyor to get the language on there and our city engineer. But it meets all our staff comments, and we're recommending approval of the plat dated 12/1/20, which is attached in your report.
Okay, that'll close the public hearing and ask the commission if they have any questions. Okay, if not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll read the motion.
Thank you.
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the final plat of the Tyson resubdivision dated 12/1/20, prepared by Hannah surveyors, as shown on Exhibit A.
So moved by O'Flaherty?
Second.
Second by Klein, roll call.
Becker?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Doe?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Chair Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, board, appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Last item on the agenda, final plat of subdivision, the petition by, the petition by DeKalb 343 LLC for approval to subdivide approximately 148 acres of land along Gorilla Road for the Ferrara Candy Company, final plat subdivision Chicago West Business Center.
The petitioner is participating via Zoom, Jerry Krasinski. So I think whenever Jerry's ready, you can kind of describe what you're proposing.
Can you hear me, Dan?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hello, everyone, thanks for allowing us to add this to the agenda this evening. This is obviously the three-lot subdivision that is just basically a continuation of the Ferrara campus. It's a formality now to separate the two buildings basically into two parcels plus the expansion parcel there. So we've been working with the city on making certain all the setbacks and easements, et cetera, are all aligned with this development. And it's been a pleasure to work with the city through this process. I'd like to just state for the record, and we're wrapping up this development for a first quarter 2001 occupancy. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions or comments from the public? Got that, staff report, please.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up from what Jerry's mentioning, a just three-lot subdivision. I have to keep that door open. Covering the distribution center for Ferrera, the PAC Center, and a future Ferrera expansion. The lots proposed, the plat shows access easement on East End of Lot 2 for the benefit of Lot 1. This is a concept plan, conceptual plan that shows this, kind of gives you coordination of where everything's at. Distribution center here, PAC Center here, occupancy early 2021 on both. And a future expansion for this would be Lot 3. So the lots are shown here, 1, 2, and 3. And with all the appropriate access easements, public utility easements, stormwater drainage easements as required by the city are shown on here. There'd be a separate sanitary sewer easement that's being worked out with the owner and the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District. Once that's worked out, that will be recorded, proven and recorded via a separate document. It will not be on this plat, but that's being worked out. Besides that, city staff has reviewed the plat and meets all our requirements. There's a sample motion approving the plat of subdivision dated 11/18/20, prepared by Jacob and Hefner Associates, and that's shown on Exhibit A.
Thank you, Dan. I assume that there isn't anyone to speak to from the public? With that, I'll close the public hearing. Ask the commission if they have any questions.
Not a public hearing, but.
Any questions from the commission? I'm ready for the motion.
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the final plat of subdivision of Chicago West Business Center dated 11/18/20, prepared by Jacob and Hefner Associates, as shown on Exhibit A.
Motion by Klein, second by Wright, all in favor?
Let's get a roll call on that. Becker?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Doe?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Chair Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Any staff reports?
Next meeting, December 21st. I'd emailed everybody the potential hearing that night. The applicant wasn't going to be available, so that looks like that's going to be January 4th hearing. So keep that on your calendar. We may have a plat or some other plan come in, not a hearing. But if not, then December 21st would be canceled. But I'll email the commission members a week before. So next meeting, January 4th, looks like we have a hearing for a 10:30 locus. It's a vacant lot, single family, that Naring Electric liked to use for a parking lot to, for overflow parking. So that requires a special use permit. Need a variance to that hearing notice, we'll send you a copy of that. Looks like January 4th, we'll send you something next week if that goes forward. And I'll probably, let me know if the 4th is not good for anybody. That's the first Monday of the year there, so let me know if that's going to be an issue with attending. Next year, we're looking to update our comprehensive plan. So last plan is actually from 2005. We've had probably half a dozen sub-area plans since then. But we want to do an overall comp plan amendment. We're going to do that in-house. But the commission would be very involved with that process in terms of input and conducting hearings for that. So hopefully by the end of 2021, we'll have a new comp plan adopted. The last council meeting on November 23rd, they did approve the special use for the U-Haul rental that the commission previously did recommend approval. So they did approve that on the November 23rd meeting. That's all.
Good. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Wright?
Second. Second.
Second of Ms. Doe. Oh, I'm sorry. You're quite welcome. Thank you, everyone. If we don't see you again before the holidays, have a wonderful start to the new year.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.